...tour. I don't stand why introduce myself and I'm Sheriff Hammond, Murphy County Sheriff. Thank you guests for being here tonight. It'll be time for you to speak on the front side, so if you need to leave and we won't hold you through our entire process. But this is our, hey guys. Hey. For the crowds, very nice tonight. This is our ninth month coming out to Murphy County community. Being transparent, this is part of our open door policy and we're going to be so very informal, just relax when we're asking you questions and if the staff, command staff knows the answers, we're going to respond pretty efficiently. If there's something that takes a little more expounding, we'll just hold back until the end of the meeting and we'll get one-on-one if you don't mind. So we appreciate that cooperation. We're not here to, not here to argue, no, we're just here for you. This is a great opportunity for you to ask anything for transparency purposes. And the main thing is, it allows you to meet the staff of the Murphy County Sheriff's Office, who makes the decisions in what areas, what expert areas that when you see a decision or process decided, you'll know who to contact, who to call. And we're proud to be here at Pintown tonight. Just recently, they celebrated their 40th year here and that's a great deal and we appreciate Pintown Fire Department. Got some of the operators, the proactive operators here. Ted and his crew. And his crew. Todd Boyd, thank you. David, the family, how you guys? Crime Stoppers, appreciate you. But at this time, the reason I like to tell you that the town hall has been so successful, it gives us feedback even after we walk away from here. I get comments throughout the community how they appreciate, because we're running it on live Facebook tonight. And believe it or not, we get a lot of views and we're proud of that. I'm very proud of the staff. I appreciate the work that they do because they do it professionally and they're very loyal to, they're very loyal to Beaufort County's residents. And I'm very proud to be the sheriff here in Beaufort County, working with this staff. So we have Chief Devin tonight, y'all just keep him in your prayers if you will and Miss, or Captain Satchel, her family, they're feeling ill today and I think there must be some crud going around. So that's the human element in, in our job. So when one falls back, the others have to step up and take in that responsibility, as many as public service workers know. Knowing that here at the fire department, y'all know that. You know what I'm proud of, as we go through it, I like to inject as they speak of their expertise and what their responsibilities. But I want you to know that the schools is our focal point this last 11 months. The schools have been top subject. Whether we're going to get back into the schools, that's, that's a decision that will be a collective decision with, that'll be a decision based on the Beaufort County School Board. And, and I've had several meetings with them discussing what the best avenue, because at this time, you know, they still have the full hire of the Universal Allied Security Police. And we feel, as the sheriff, I feel like we have a best product. We have the best situation to get back in. But some of our, some of our dilemmas or drawbacks or challenges is going to be staffing. And so when we speak about staffing, there's 12 public schools. And what I met with the county commissioners and school board last month, we assured them that we could get six. And I believe that's a realistic number to have by August school year of 2024. So it was going to be a challenge. But I'm willing to put that challenge on our staff to go out and recruit for the benefit of our parents and our kids here in this county. Why I'm so, why my conviction is about sheriff's deputies being in that school? We train together, we train like other law enforcement train. We communicate like other law enforcement communicate. We have the equipment to communicate outside of our agency. We able to communicate with Highway Patrol, Wildlife, all the agencies, state and local agencies, which gives us the greatest advantage on response time into an event when it does occur. But we're here to support the existing security measures that are into school and, and we will, that's my priority. And we'll continue to be there with that priority. So saying that, what we do proactively is we have assigned the patrol units when they're out on duty to go by the schools each morning and, and the afternoon when they pick up the kids. And to date, in addition, I want to speak, in addition to what the security element is already on the property, in addition to that, the deputy, our deputies at Beaufort County Sheriff's Office has gone to the schools 2,996 times and that number is at the last day of October. So we're into the mid-November. So Trillium. You know, that happened at the 40th anniversary of the, so I know it's not that y'all tired of hearing me, that was just the way it was, sorry. And I'm about to, I'm about to move next. So, good point. Nearly 3,000 contacts that we made in addition to the existing security, that the deputies have made contact with the principal or faculty, or they have drove, followed a bus in the rural areas and within the county and made contact to ensure careless or reckless drivers, bus drivers, monitoring, monitoring the totality of that transportation of the kids. And that's for the security purpose. So I want to tell you that is a, an accomplishment, that you can be assured that we are proactive. So we're doing, we're doing, I believe, what is the best for Beaufort County. All right, at this time, what I like to do is introduce our chain of command. Again, Chief Deputy is not here, he would be the next in command, as y'all know, Chief Hickman. He's a very honorable, honorable guy and I know he misses being here tonight. But his responsibility is the operations of Beaufort County Sheriff's Office and, and mine being the professional standards and the oversight of Beaufort County's security and, and that relationship, bridging that trust between the community and the Sheriff's Office. And that's, that's a pretty tall order. But I'm going to tell you, we have accomplished so much in the last 11 months. But at this time, Major, not mine, but the office major Hewitt, I'm going to sit down, they're going to relax while they're introducing themselves. It's easier for all of us and I just want to say welcome. All right, thank you.
I'm Jeremy Hewitt, I'm the major with the Sheriff's Office. I'm going to cover a couple, a couple of different things tonight because I'm actually going to cover Captain Satchel who's out, cover stuff about the jail. So I'll start off with that. So Captain Satchel oversees the jail, which is, has a capacity for 85 inmates, which is male and female adults. Juveniles that are arrested are housed in Pitt County, whether they're Beaufort County charges or Pitt County. We have 20 authorized positions in the jail, which includes the jail administrator, two assistant administrators, and then you have corporals that run the shifts and officers. There are three officers on each shift, one corporal supervisor on each shift. The jail partners with Agape, who we have represented from, and she's actually our coordinator for the services that they provide for our medical care in the jail. And so that, and that's a change that's happened since the sheriff took office, changing from the health department, going with Agape for the services, which has saved the county money through the medication costs as well as other aspects and also help bolster up the coverage that we have down there for the basic needs that the inmates have in the jail. Because just because they're an inmate doesn't mean they don't have the entitlement to have basic healthcare needs. And additionally, the people going to jail are usually very sick people because of life choices that have got them in trouble in the first place. So, so Satchel, Chief Satchel, Captain Satchel, she, she stays very busy, she's doing all the paperwork that comes through when an inmate is incarcerated, that we have to track that from the time they come into the facility to they get sent to prison or they get out or bond out. But it's, there's a lot of paperwork that has to be checked and double-checked to make sure everything's right so it don't release somebody that should stay in custody, for example. In addition to, besides the jail, I used to serve as the administrator, now I'm dealing with like public events that the Sheriff's Office attends, whether it be parades or the summer festival. If you went to the summer festival, you noticed we had a big presence there because the sheriff wanted to be a part of that, wanted our operations to be known and also it's a good recruiting opportunity. So I schedule all the events that we participate in, in the county. I'm over professional standards, which is our policies and procedures. I gather that information and we, we've started changing over our policy from the previous administration and the sheriff and, and the staff has identified the missing links that we had in policy, the things that are high liability that we didn't have policies for and things like that. So my job is to go in and add new policies and make sure that people are in compliance with reading them, understanding them. I'm the public information officer, so when we send out press releases, that I'm sending that out and then corresponding with the media and making sure we're getting enough information out to satisfy what, what the need is with that. I am the Crime Stoppers Coordinator for Beaufort County. I think most people have heard by now that Crime Stoppers has P3 tips for their tips app now, which lets you use your mobile device to submit tips. When those tips come in, they come to me and I, if it's 2:00 in the morning, I get it, it doesn't matter what time it is, I look at it and I send it to the proper agency. Right now, we have, you know, the police departments, we have Highway Patrol, we have ALE, any agency that could get a tip is entered in there and I can forward that information to them. If it's critical information, emergency information, they're told to call 911 or law enforcement instead of doing it just as a tip. But if I see that and I see it's an emergency or a hot case that's coming in, like when we had a wanted person, I'll go ahead and call the agency and say, hey, this is where they're at so we can go and get it taken care of. On tips and apps, and if you might, you might have to cover this, Sheriff?
Absolutely.
Some of, if you've been in here and talked with the sheriff, I know he's, he's told you about the Sheriff's Office app. So if, we have the QR code over there and I have one up here. If you download this app on your phone, it's no cost to you or anything like that. And you can get information anywhere from our inmates that are incarcerated, which if you wanted to be notified when their status changes, like if they get bonded out, you could ask, you could request that information and get notified.
Automated.
To, yes, automated based off of the saving system, I believe. And there is the sex offender registry, so there's a map you can pull up and you can see if there's a sex offender that lives nearby where you're at or where you work or where you have a concern at. The, the press releases we do, they go out through alerts on there, but there could also be alert, like if the fire department was to say to communications, there's a tree down on a road and it's a hazard, we could send that alert out to let people know about. There's a lot of information and that's just barely touching. In addition to the fact we have our own tip capability on there as well, you can submit a tip through Crime Stoppers or to the Sheriff's Office directly through the app as well. So, see if I've missed anything. Community Watch, Lieutenant David Richards is the coordinator for Community Watch, which he's under me. We, the sheriff has a prerogative to get as many Community Watches established and, or go on again in Beaufort County so that every neighborhood is connected. The purpose of Community Watch is not that you're the, the police in your neighborhood, but it's observing and reporting what's going on, using good decision-making and sharing that information with your neighbors. So a guy comes in your neighborhood that doesn't, that you know that belong there because you know your neighborhood, you call and let us know about it if, if they're doing something that could be a crime. But then you will use that through those tools available through Community Watch, you will share that information with your neighbors and they'll be looking, turning porch lights on, making sure he knows that everybody's awake in the neighborhood and it's not his opportunity to do something because most crimes are crimes of opportunity. Leaving your car unlocked or your house unlocked, for example. So, but he is, he's the contact for the Sheriff's Office if you're interested in starting one in your neighborhood or revamping it if it existed and it just kind of went to sleep, so to speak. So, and that's all I got, Sheriff.
Very good. And another couple ideas, you know, if you've got these remotes on your car, hitting that if you hear suspicious or you hear something rattling around the yard, hit the alarm on the, or hit the headlights and they know that you're acknowledging somebody, you know, somebody's out there. So just a few ideas for, for the community to watch. So at this time, I think we're going to introduce Trillium Health Resource Community Liaison Coordinator, Tiffany Harry. Ms. Harry, welcome.
Yeah, thanks for having me. So I'm a community liaison for Trillium Health Resources and my title of community, that's, that's what I'm all about. And I love that the sheriff has been offering these to all the communities in Beaufort County. I actually, you know, Trillium covers 28 counties in Eastern North Carolina, I cover eight of those counties. And I, I don't know if, if y'all know that you guys are really ahead of the game when it comes to a lot of the resources and some of the things that you're offering here in Beaufort County. I've had the opportunity to sit in recovery court and, you know, mental health and substance use is a really big conversation. And when it comes to the criminal justice system, we're starting to recognize that, you know, we can't just arrest our way out of some of these problems. You know, addressing mental health, getting people the help that they need, recognizing that, you know, when it comes to substance use disorder, that this is somebody who is, you know, essentially self-medicating and they need options, they need resources. I don't know how many of you, if you were approached by a member of the community, and I know there's a lot of first responders in the room, if someone said, I really need help for my mental health, you know, what do I do? How many of you would know to refer to Trillium or Agape or some of these providers that are local? So that's really why we're here tonight, is we want to let you all know that, you know, these options are available in the community. If you know someone who is uninsured, someone who really wants to get that appointment, really wants that help with their mental health, please have them call Trillium Health Resources so that we can try to get them some of that help that they need. I also brought some RAC cards for Mobile Crisis Team. If you aren't aware, you do have a Mobile Crisis Team that will come to your home to help de-escalate any of these mental health scenarios or situations that may arise. We also offer CIT training to law enforcement, which is the Crisis Intervention Team Training Program, where we teach law enforcement and first responders how to recognize these mental health crises and, and the things to say or do to de-escalate and link them to resources. So there are a lot of resources available in this county, y'all are doing a lot of really great things. So feel free to take, you know, some of the pamphlets here tonight and be sharing with that, sharing that information with the community because that's, that's really the importance of resources, is that they need to be shared, people need to know what's available. So thank you to the Beaufort County Sheriff's Office and Sheriff family for having us here tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Harry. And just to spin off, we do have on the Sheriff's Office app, there is a resources tab, soft button, that only deals with mental illness and Trillium is there, Port Help. Agape's up, will be if not, but I think I didn't see it up there, but it, it is a source. It is up there?
Yes.
Outstanding. So those sources are on there and we appreciate it. And she speaks, Ms. Harry speaks of CIT training, that is part of our deputies require training. It's in their schedule of training, so thank you for that.
And we do that for fighter EMS, so if you wanted to learn more about mental health, please feel free to reach out and contact us, we'd love to come train you.
Good job, thank you. Any questions? Thank you for coming tonight. Our second guest is Beaufort County Crime Stoppers Board, Megan Waters. Welcome, Ms. Waters.
So I have been on the board for a few years, most of whom probably are all involved. It's December 2nd, we have tickets, Sheriff's Office has tickets, I think Washington PD has tickets and I can get tickets, you have tickets. But we work alongside of the Sheriff's Office and all the surrounding PDs with the, the P3 app, we work along with them with that, so if you don't have it downloaded, it's, I think it's free for?
It is.
That's it.
And you know, it is a, it is a means of fundraising in order to pay for your tips, you know, so it's their annual fundraiser. And if you choose not to go, no problem, but if you are able to buy a ticket, I bought a ticket and I'm not able to go that night, but allowed it to be raffled back out too. So allow them to make money on the money. So if that's something that you're able to do, for those watching on Facebook Live, you can go on our website or call our office at 946-7111 and we're, we're partnership in trying to help them raise the money to pay these tips. So thank you for coming tonight. Our next guest is Agape Director of Operations, Mariana Relinsky. We thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And Agape is our primary caregiver in the jail.
Yes, sir.
And we appreciate it. You go ahead.
Thank you so much. So Agape Health Services is a primary care provider. We have like a very large spectrum of different services. We provide primary medical care, we have behavioral health services, including case management and medication assisted treatment. In addition to that, we have dental health services, we have, and also we have one-site pharmacy. Our one-site pharmacy provides 340B program, which is providing medications with a reduced price. That is Major Hewitt was mentioning, is that we're getting reimbursed through 340B pharmacy program and we are able to provide medications to people in the community with cheaper than other places. So we give that choice. In addition to that, we serve everybody, we serve insured, uninsured patients, partially insured patients. We operate on the sliding fee scale program, which allows us to calculate the amount the patient will pay for the visit based on the patient's income. So we will calculate that and that's the way we try to make healthcare as much accessible as possible for everybody in the communities we serve. We have three sites, we have one, three physical sites. One in Washington County, in Washington County in Blimov, we opened on March 3rd this year. We have another location in Williamstone, which is Martin County and Beaufort County and Washington, North Carolina. In addition to that, we provide school-based services in Washington and Hyde Counties, which we provide school-based healthcare and in Washington County primarily and Hyde County, including behavioral health services. So primary care and behavioral health services in both locations. Hyde County primary care though, it's something, a new project that we taking on and we working on it, we're developing it. However, Washington County Health Services has been provided in schools for the last year and continue moving forward. In addition to that, we have been honored to offer, to provide healthcare services in the jail in Beaufort County and I wanted to thank you so much for being such an amazing team. It's been an amazing collaboration, Captain Satchel has been an amazing leader. It's been a very productive work environment with all of us. It has been a, how to say, like a solutions-based environment and collaboration, instead of trying to find just what was, what is wrong and what, what doesn't work. We have a very positive work environment and I wanted to thank you for providing that. Our team is very happy to provide services. We, we're very excited about the opportunities that we bring to this community because just like Major Hewitt mentioned, everybody deserves a healthcare and healthcare is a right. And everybody, regardless of who they are, what they done right, what they done wrong, they deserve to have access to healthcare. And we honored to provide that and in addition to that, the services, additional services that behavioral health, mental health, case management, everything else that Agape has under its umbrella helps incarcerated patients to have a better, I guess, to enter back into the community easier and be more productive to the society. So thank you so much and it's been an honor and thank you so much, Major Hewitt, for inviting me tonight and thank you.
Thank you for coming, thank you all.
I'll be happy to answer any questions if you want.
Very nice. Thank you again for the guests being here. At this time, to my right is Director Harris and I'll let her introduce herself and thank you, ma'am.
As the sheriff said, my name is Callie Harris. I'm the Director of Administrative Services. What that means is I oversee the day-to-day operations of the front office, which includes fingerprinting, processing of concealed paperwork, papers, writs, all of those type of civil process. I'm very fortunate to have four staff members that help make sure that those days go professionally and go smoothly. I don't know that I could run it without them. In addition to that, I prepare and manage the annual budget, accounts payable, any financial functions that are associated with the agency. The chief and I partner on anything that has to do with managing the financial function when it comes to budget or any accounts payable. We work very closely of, over the oversight of that function. The Beaufort County Sheriff's Office also does the sex offender registry for Beaufort County. Currently, we have 131 registrants. We work tirelessly to ensure that all of those registrants have the tools to follow the guidelines and the rules for the registry to ensure their safety as well as the safety of the community in which they live in. Our office hours, just a few things about the office itself, is Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, except for holidays. And this year, we will be closed December 25th, 26th, and 27th and also January 1st, which is a Monday. I'm very excited to announce that we have launched in the last couple of weeks, I know everybody probably remembered us doing gun permits online with the permidium program. I'm very excited to announce that we have launched the concealed process on the permidium site. So you can go through the Sheriff's Office app, if you go on the app, it has a direct link to that. Also on our website, if you go under resource tab and click gun permits, it goes directly to that opportunity to do your renewal and your new online. For the concealeds, doing it traditionally, you still have to take the class and you can find this through the college and other instructors. The application does require fingerprinting, a new concealed, and we do that Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays, 8:30 to 11:30. When you do the, do the application online, it gives you more opportunity to pay online. You also have the opportunity to set an appointment for your fingerprinting. There's also additional times online that you can choose, other than the Monday, Wednesday and Friday mornings. We also still offer the notarization process when you come in. When you come in, even as an online applicant, you need to bring that certificate, your ID, $90 cash, and we will be able to print your application, if you're not able to do that, and notarize it for you that day. So you will have taken care of everything, the exception of the notarization and your fingerprinting when you arrive. For the renewal process, you can do the same thing, you can go online and renew, that does not require fingerprinting and you can come in anytime, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, to do that renewal. If you choose to do the online option, you'll be able to complete the application and pay. If you choose to do the online option, you'll be able to complete the application and pay online. So when you come in, it's just a matter of notarizing your paperwork. Both of those processes, generally concealed, new and renew, both take 90 days to complete. Just a few fun things about permit holder, a few things to remember. If you move within the county, you need to get your driver's license changed first and then come in and get your permit address changed. You have the option to get a new card, which is $15, but that update will continue for your, your information to be consistent on both your concealed and your driver's license. If you choose to move out of county, you still need to come to our office first to get that address changed so that the county that you're going to will have your file as well as have your information and accurately have your information. If your permit expires, if you come in before the 90 days, or 60 days, you have a 60-day window to come in. You will still have to be a new concealed applicant, but you won't have to take the class. If you get past 60 days, you will have to take the class again. Other than that, I'm really excited about this permidium, new online option. Like I said, you can go through the website, Resources, click Gun Permit, or you can do it through the Sheriff's App, direct link to that. Thank you for coming out and sharing your time with us. And I'll answer any questions you have during designated time for questions.
What's the toy, we got a toy box drop-off in the front office.
Yes, sir.
Who's that through? So Salvation Army, Toys for Tots. So we have a Toys for Tots. If you will, for those watching on Facebook Live, we are a drop-off point. We're working also in conjunction with Salvation Army. And we look, we appreciate speaking on their behalf. Matter of fact, tomorrow morning at the Community College, Salvation Army is kicking off their red bell kettle ringing for the, for the year. I'm sure that Major Vic would appreciate you being there tomorrow to show representation for the county. So, but we have deputies that are volunteering throughout the, throughout this period of time. We appreciate your support. All right, thank you, Director Kell. To my left is Director Victoria Van Norwick. She's, if you will introduce yourself, please.
As the sheriff said, I'm Victoria Van Norwick, the Director of 911 and Communications. Our communication staff, we are authorized 17 positions. That includes myself, an Assistant Director, an IT Specialist, and then we have 14 telecommunicator positions. We not only dispatch for the Sheriff's Office, but we dispatch for a wide variety of resources. 14 fire departments, seven EMS rescue squads, two other police departments, including Bellhaven and Chalkawinity. And we also are a direct link to connect you to other resources like wildlife, the Red Cross, animal control, DSS, and other resources such as that. We take up an average of 300 to 400 calls a day and we take about anywhere from 50 to 150 calls for service a day. There's multiple ways to contact us. Everyone knows if you have an emergency, you call 911. We also handle non-emergency calls. We handle that on our 946-0101 number. I can give you that number too afterwards. And then we also have text to 911 capabilities. Some people don't know that, but we are able to receive text to our 911 center and it triangulates the signal on a tower and gives us location information just like it would if you were to call in on your cell phone. I wanted to just take this time to break down a 911 call. I know this side of the room is a lot of our own, very own first responders that we dispatch, so a lot of them already know this information. But hopefully, not everybody has had to call 911 in their lifetime. But if so, we're going to ask you for specific information and we're going to ask it in a way that is to our policy and it's per policy, but there's a reason why we ask it when we ask it. Soon as we answer the phone, a lot of people, right off the bat, tell us the emergency, what happened and what they need. And we have to then calmly ask people to first state their address. We're going to get your address first. It's not that we don't care about the problem, but we can't send you help if we don't know where to send it. If a phone call drops, at least we have the address. You know you need some kind of help, so we can go ahead and get help started. So we're going to tell you to backup. We're going to ask you for your address. We're going to ask you for your phone number. That way, if we lose the call, we now know where to send people and then we know a phone number to call you back and try to get you back on the phone. Then we're going to ask you what your emergency is. We, in Communications, we have protocols that are called EMD and EFD protocols. It's Emergency Medical Dispatch and Emergency Fire Dispatch. Basically, if you call 911 and you have a medical emergency or a fire emergency, we're able to pull up those specific protocols and we're able to walk you through. We're going to give you, ask you specific questions to gain specific information from you and then we're able to give you life-saving measures that could help the way a call could end up. So for example, we're able to give you life-saving measures such as the Heimlich maneuver. We actually had one of our telecommunicators, a late female called. Her child was choking on some food and she was able to give her specific Heimlich maneuver measures for a infant, for a child. And we were able to hear the child start breathing again. So we're able to give Heimlich maneuver. We're able to give CPR instructions over the phone. If your house is on fire and it's filling up with smoke or where you're at, we're able to tell you what to do next, you know, to get down to the ground, to crawl, to fill a door, fill a wall before you enter another room. But along with this, we ask a bunch of questions when you call and you need fire EMS. A lot of times, that can frustrate people. They think that the more questions we ask, the longer it's delaying help. What is important to know is that we work as a team in Communications. If one person's taking the call, asking the questions, another person's sending out the resources to you. That information that we gain, if you called because you think a loved one's having a heart attack, we're going to ask you what medications they're taking, what medication they've recently took. We're going to ask you what color, are they changing color? We're going to ask you to ask them certain questions to get the answer. That is not delaying help. Help's already been dispatched. What we're doing is obtaining a lot of very vital information that we're real-time relaying to the EMS workers, to the fire department, thus en route to your house or to your location. So that way, the more information we can get from a caller, the more information we can relay to the resources going to help you. When they get there, they already have a game plan. They can know in their mind what they need, what resources they need to take with them. And that way, it's just a faster response for you. So we always, instead of getting frustrated with the questions, just stay on the line with us, give us as much information as we can because it's really just helping the situation. The more informed we are, the better of a reaction we can have to help you. I also just wanted to take this time to bring up, the sheriff had mentioned a few months ago about how he even saw going in Communications that we get a lot of accidental calls into 911. We get a lot, if you walk in there, it's probably common. You're going to hear us answer a 911 call and you're going to hear us say, "That's okay. You have a good day." A lot of people that we get a high volume of accidental calls into 911. Some cases for this could be a pocket dial. That's the most common, if someone pocket dials us. Next is with good old iPhones. If somehow you click the side button five times, it's in your pocketbook or it's in your pocket, it's going to go into emergency mode and it's going to call us. Some people with an Apple Watch. If you're running or if you're doing something and your watch shakes so many times, it's, it can call 911. And then the biggest thing I think that we see in Communications is children playing with what you think's a disconnected cellphone. Well, disconnected cellphone, you give it to a child, if they call 911, it's still going to go into activation and it's going to call 911. That being said, we just want to make you aware of that and those situations that can happen. If it does happen, please just stay on the phone. Let us know that it was accident. Let us know that everything's okay, that there's not an emergency because if not, it's our protocol to call you back and continue to call you back until you answer. If you don't answer, we're sending resources to the location that we paint. So now we're tying up not only phone lines, but we're also tying up resources to send to somewhere that we could be sending somewhere else. So just remember, stay on the line or even sometimes just give us a call back and let us know that it was an accident. And lastly, I just wanted to remind people that as we go into the holiday season with Thanksgiving and Christmas and the New Years, that Captain Sidersen always will tell people about our house check program that Patrol does. Well, I just wanted to remind people that this is definitely something that you can utilize. These calls come into Communications first. You can call our 946-0101 number. If you or a loved one plans on being out of town for the holiday season, they want to kind of have someone keep an eye on their house, keep an eye on what's going on, you can call into Communications. We're going to ask you specific questions. How long you're going to be gone? If there's any cars in the driveway that you're going to leave in the driveway? That way, something, if the deputy will have all that information when they go and check on your house. So if they see a car that's not on the list, that shouldn't be there, we can give you a call. A lot of people say, "Well, I'll have my sons come in in this vehicle. He's going to feed my pets." So he might be in the vehicle or he might be in the driveway. We put all that stuff down and then you just give us a call when you're back. But, and then that way, that puts the deputies out in your area, checking on your house, checking on your residents while you're gone. And then also the, thank you for that, that's important. So we've actually changed it. So when we assign you these house checks and the information, we give your address a specific number. So when they go to these addresses, nothing said over the radio address-wise. It's just given out by a number. So none of that information goes out over the radio or anything of that sense or that matter. But other than that, that's all I have and I hope everybody has a good upcoming holiday season.
Good job. It's an amazing operational room is the 911 center. When you're watching, when you're watching the EMD process procedures work and they're talking to people on the 911 call, they're talking through a CPR matter where I witnessed firsthand a lady responding to her husband not, not responding. And the 911 operator has to talk them through bringing that person off the chair, onto a hard surface, speaking out, staying calmly, talking CPR one step by step. I'm very proud to see what that 911 operator, the capabilities, the professionalism. And we thank you, Director Van Norwick. That is a very professional program you, you're training and thank you again. To my right, Captain Neal, introduce yourself, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you again for coming, as well as those watching on Facebook Live. My name is Casey Neal. I'm the captain of our Special Operations Division at the Sheriff's Office. So under Special Operations, it's broke down into four separate units or four separate divisions. So first under Special Operations is our Drug Unit. I supervise a group of deputies that are very passionate and work aggressively in Beaufort County to try to combat dangerous drugs from coming out of county. Unfortunately, you know, well, Beaufort County's a great county, but we're not an exception to the rule when it comes to current trends across our country. So as of today, or since January, our Drug Unit's conducted 216 drug investigations and all of which are felony or either trafficking level drug investigations. And of those 216, the overwhelmingly majority of drug that we deal with and see now is fentanyl. And I've been working in the narcotic world since 2011 and this is the first year that I've seen fentanyl surpass every other drug that we deal with or come in contact with. And then we got a lot of first responders here tonight and you guys probably see it as much as we do, as the opiate overdoses from fentanyl. And so to help combat that, Sheriff Hammons has implemented, every sworn officer has, now carries Narcan. That was implemented, I think, the end of the summer this year. But aside from that, our Drug Unit works very aggressively to try to keep dangerous drugs out of our community, whether it be through undercover buys, through traffic stops, enforcement. And a lot of the information that we get and able to continue these cases is through the tips that are received through the Sheriff's App, through P3 tips. So that's, again, fentanyl is probably the, the most common, or it is the most common drug. Just two weeks ago, unfortunately, we arrested a high school student in Beaufort County for selling fentanyl pills. So it's, again, very, very prevalent. Another item that falls under the responsibility of the Drug Unit is our Medicine Dropbox. This evening, as you came in, we had two deputies out there that were taking in medication, expired medication or old medication that you can properly dispose of. And we do this event twice a year that's scheduled and other events like this. But we also have a Dropbox at the front of our Sheriff's Office that you can bring old medications, expired medications. That way, it's not polluting anything and nobody gets hold of it ain't supposed to. Next under Special Operations is our Drone Team. That's a game changer for Sheriff's Office. I know Pintown has a very well-established drone team that we've actually had, they've helped to answer some questions for us since it's kind of new to us. But our Drone Team is, consists of six deputies that have a specialized pilot's license. And the reason why I call it a game changer is, for example, and, and we had this, this happen tonight, actually, when we're on the way here, missing juvenile that left home. We have people with cognitive disabilities, maybe somebody with Alzheimer's or dementia that walks away from home in the middle of the night. And having something like the drone with the infrared technology you can find that person a lot, lot quicker than just a grid search with bodies walking through the woods. So having that, we use it for security on, on scenes, whether it be a fire scene or a search warrant that the Drug Unit's doing. We help, that, that's a good tool we use for an overwatch for security. So the Drone Team is something that's been a good asset addition to the Sheriff's Office. Next under Special Operations is our Mobile Field Force. So what that is, is a group of deputies or at the Sheriff's Office. We have 38 deputies that are equipped with riot gear that can respond to scenes, anytime there's a civil unrest or in case of a riot that breaks out in our community. And again, fortunately, we live in Beaufort County, a good, safe area. But just like y'all have been following on the news, what's going on with Israel and Hamas, we get alerts daily across our state where there's planned protests and rallies and those things can become violent. And now we have 38 deputies that can respond to help protect property and ensure things remain in control for that. Last thing that falls under my division is our SRT, or Sheriff's Response Team. So prior to Sheriff Hammons taking office, whenever there was an unusual event or something, some emergency situation such as a hostage situation or a barricaded subject with a gun, maybe somebody suffering from a mental illness that has a weapon, it was always members from the Drug Unit or from Patrol Division or Criminal Investigations that would respond to get that scenario controlled. Well, now we have 11 deputies that are continuing to train and are issued specialized equipment that can better respond to those situations, whether it be a high-risk search warrant or apprehension of a murder suspect or a violent individual or a hostage situation. So we're continuing to train. I'm real excited about it. It's a new program we're getting off the ground and, and getting implemented to be a better service for the residents of this county. Something that made me think of it when Director Harris was talking about the gun permits. Just a little public service announcement, I'm an avid hunter. I've hunted my whole life. This time of year during hunt season, if you're a hunter, just be conscious of leaving your weapons where it's visible in your truck or vehicle or what have you, whether you go into a gas station or restaurant. Just don't want anybody looking in, seeing it, getting the bright idea of breaking in and stealing it. And also parents that have children that are teenagers that are driving to school, whether it be purposely or not, please make sure to tell your, your, your children that are driving not to carry weapons on school grounds. I know children that have hunted in the morning time and then turn around and go to school, but any kind of firearm or bow and arrow, it's a felony if they take that weapon on the school property. So just be conscious of that and remind your family members of it.
That's an excellent point about our students that are attending public schools. The parents, do, do your part. Go ahead and have your kids to remove those weapons from their vehicle before they go to school. they go to school. It's just gonna be, it's gonna be a mark on a record, or a day in court unnecessarily. So, and as rural as Beaufort County is, it's gonna happen. But, let's try to, let's try to get the guns out of the car, let them be kids, and they can go home and get their guns, go hunt. So, alright, good job. I wanted to go back to our communications. She was speaking, Director Van Norwick was speaking about numbers. I just wanted to briefly give you some numbers. Civil calls that we have year-to-date is 3,799 calls, civil calls, just in civil papers, service papers. 1084s and 1089s, which is community, drive-throughs, going to your houses, checking houses, is 10,000, a little over 10,000 calls that go into the 911 center. The schools, we talked about, a little over 3,000. That's a lot of expectations out of a 911 operator. But, they become professionals at what they do, and we want to tell them thank you. Matter of fact, it's such a, it's such an appreciation, there's National Communication, what is it, 911 Operator Week, Communications Week?
Telecommunicator Week.
Telecommunicator Week. And we want to, that those who believe they would be interested in that line of work, who can multitask, feel like you've got the right, what it takes, we have on our app, you can contact us for a interview, or a sit-in, to see if that cuts out for you to go to work, and we appreciate you. Alright, to my left, Captain Sidersen, patrol captain. Thank you.
Good evening. How's everybody? I'm Kevin Sidersen, captain of the patrol division. We're the largest division at sheriff's office. We're allotted 27 positions. We provide coverage all over Beaufort County, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. The patrol, patrol deputies respond to emergency and non-emergency calls. All of these include domestic violence, sexual assaults, robberies, felony, misdemeanor assaults, larcenies, frauds, commercial and residential property crimes, any alarm activations, both business and residential, traffic control, and minor traffic control, and complaints, as well as welfare checks, and animal complaints that come in. One of the things that Sheriff Hammond's initiated is Ace of Hearts Initiative, which is, he can explain it a little bit more in closing, but it's animal, children, and elderly. So, we are the first, first ones to usually get those complaints, and initiate those complaints, and move them up to either adult protective services, or child protective services, or Beaufort County Animal Control. We serve both civil and criminal process papers. We do, as Sheriff Hammond's just mentioned, the area neighborhood patrols, which is our 1084s, and the business residential checks that Director Van Norwick spoke about, which is our 1089s. And then, we also, along with other deputies at the sheriff's office, do school and bus safety and security checks, where deputies will get out, and go in and make contact with administrators, speak with them, ask if there's anything going on that particular day, while they're out on patrol in the mornings and afternoons, when children are being dropped off and on the bus. They'll pull in behind a bus, they'll call in the bus number, ride along behind it, observe it, make sure that there's no, you know, traffic violations, people passing stop school buses, those types of things. Some of the other duties that we do with the patrol division is we perform escorts for charity events and parades, funeral escorts, public speaking engagements for career and job fair days. And then, we also assist CID, Criminal Investigation Divisions, and the drug unit with any crime scenes or cases that they may have initially. We also assist fire and rescue at emergency scenes, to include hazmat, disaster, and any severe weather. We are initial response, most of the time for assisting with search and rescue for lost and missing persons, be it children, or Alzheimer's, elderly. And then, we also do transporting of inmates and prisoners, and mentally ill, to and from other facilities throughout the state, for either incarceration, judicial hearings, or some type of treatment. I'm also responsible for the sheriff's office training as a whole, and our FTO program, which is Field Training Officer Program, for all of our new hires that come in. They go through a pretty extensive, up to 16-week training program before they're released, and on their own. One of the other things that Sheriff Hammond's has implemented is a church safety assessment program. So, if you, if you would like to have one of us come out, and we have about an hour lesson plan that we can go over with your church, your congregation, however you choose, and just kind of touch base on some of the things that might would help with the safety and surroundings of your church, and security in the building itself. Because it is the holidays coming, I just want to remind everybody that when you're out and about shopping, if you'll just, you know, pull into a parking lot, and go in places, if you'll just be patient, when you're looking for those parking spaces, don't speed up to catch an empty spot. Park, try to park your vehicle in a well-lit area. Don't leave anything valuable in your car, don't be an easy target. Make sure you lock your vehicle. That includes even when you get home. The majority of all the car B and Es we've had in Beaufort County have been from vehicles that are literally in the driveway and unlocked. So, you know, it might be a good idea to start locking up your vehicle at night, even if it is in your yard. Make mental note of where you parked in a busy parking center. Have your keys in hand when you're walking back to your vehicle. One of the biggest reasons on that is, is you can hit that red panic button to kind of draw attention to yourself if need be. Store any shopping bags out of plain sight, in your trunk, or in the back, if you can. And just always make sure that you look for other cars, or people walking as you're backing out of your parking spot. Other than that, like Director Van Norwick said, I hope everybody has a good, safe, happy holiday season. Sheriff?
Very good advice. Thank you. To my right, CID, Captain Waters.
Good afternoon, or shall I say, good evening. Like Sheriff said, my name is Western Waters. I am the captain of Criminal Investigations, where I lead a team of six detectives who are responsible for crime scene processing, and conducting follow-up investigations of all non-narcotic felony crimes. Some of these crimes could include animal abuse, arson, burglaries, breaking and entering, child and elder abuse, frauds, homicides, missing persons, and unfortunately, sex offenses. During an investigation, detectives review and apply the elements of criminal law to their investigation, to make sure they meet the elements before they make that charge. Depending on the crime, detectives can collect physical evidence, electronic evidence, utilize Crime Stoppers tips, conduct interviews with witnesses and suspects. Oftentimes, we try to recover stolen property. We have done that, we do that regularly. And we often send evidence to the crime lab in Raleigh for analysis. Detectives also apply and obtain for, obtain search warrants, if it's applicable, or the case is presented to the grand jury for indictment purposes. Oftentimes, detectives will consult with the district attorney's office, and for guidance based on case law from previous court proceedings. Since the sheriff has come into the office, we have designated one detective the task of reviewing and following up on unsolved homicides in Beaufort County. I want the public to know that there is no statute of limitation for murder in North Carolina. If you have any information that can lead to an arrest of any unsolved homicide, or any crime, please contact the sheriff's office or Crime Stoppers. Criminal Investigations also assist patrol and the special operations division as needed. We also have a civilian evidence custodian that is part of Criminal Investigations, who is responsible for cataloging, storing, and disposing of physical evidence that is collected during an investigation. Unfortunately, we have started seeing a lot of fraud and scams committed against our elderly in the county, from people in other areas of the country, or other, or other parts of the world, as a matter of fact. They can range from saying that you owe money, and if you don't pay it, you're gonna go to jail, or they could say that your family member is in jail. They can act like your family member, and want you to give money through gift cards, okay? Other examples are that you've won a prize, but you gotta pay some money to get that prize. It's too good to be true, if it sounds too good to be true, it probably is not a good idea. So, please don't fall victim to a fraud. And as Captain Sidersen spoke about earlier, it is Christmas, and there's some safety tips I'd like to provide for y'all. Please don't display your gifts where they can be seen from the outside. People riding by and looking in the windows might see it. They're scoping out places. After Christmas, please don't put the empty boxes for your large expensive items outside to the road. As people drive by, they see it at the curb side for trash pickup, and they get some ideas. Instead, let's break them down, and put them in trash bags, and put them in the trash can, or you could use them for storage within the house. Another example of safety tip that can help you around is taking the inventory of all of your valuables in your home, electronics, jewelry, or firearms, anything of value. Take photographs of them, document your serial numbers. Do me a favor, make two copies. One stays at your house, and give the other copy to your friend or a family member. That way, it'll help in the event, God forbid, your house catches on fire. We've got a second copy that can help you with that. Be wary of people going door-to-door soliciting for charitable donations. Help charitable organizations that you know personally. And I might add to what Captain Sidersen said, when you're out shopping, be alert and aware of your surroundings, what's going on around you. Avoid carrying large amounts of cash. Don't carry large purses or wallets that can be easily snatched and pulled away from you. That would be my suggestion. Carry your wallet in your front pants pocket, or smaller purse. I wouldn't recommend carrying your social security card, PIN numbers, or passwords in your wallet or purse. And at night, when you're out shopping, if you're walking to your, when it's time to walk to your car, ask a store employee to walk with you to the store if you feel unsafe, or go shop with a friend or another family member, so you're multiple people. And with that, I want to wish each of y'all a happy holiday season, Merry Christmas.
Very good. I wanted to touch on about the people who are looking, or coming around your house, looking for work, asking for money. If someone comes up at your house at 9:45 PM at night, and they claim that they're homeless, and they're just asking, looking for work to do the next day, I want you to take a real deep caution, a real hard look at that. If you're homeless, we, we deal with the homeless on a daily basis, and we help the homeless the most we possibly can. But, for those who are out at 9:45, 10 o'clock, looking for money, or looking for work, just be cautious that they're, what their intentions are. Keep your house locked, let your family know to take a proactive, turn the lights on. Because, I interpret that a little bit. It's my job to interpret it, to tell you that if somebody's at my house at 10 o'clock asking for work the next day, I would say that's probably not what they're up to. Okay? It's my job to tell you that. And that's happening around Beaufort County, around town, around our outer communities. So, share that with your family. Tell them to keep their house locked. We're coming up on the holidays. We don't want to, we don't want to take anything to make you frightened, but I just want you to be vigilant and be aware. Also, about the cold cases, we did establish the detective specifically for cold cases. For you families that have unsolved cases, you have my word, that we are working very diligently to get those updates to you. It's coming, and we'll let you know what the update is on that status, as we're able to. Some of this is taking a lot of time to go back in to 80s, and the 90s, and the 2000s, so some of you be, you know, may be aware of some of these cases. But, we're gonna get you, get you at least a reaction, okay, or some updates. For those who are bringing drugs and poison into Beaufort County, I caution you, we are looking for you, and we will find you, and we will take you to jail and put you where you belong. This poison's killing our families. It's killing everyone, either through a overdose, or it's putting them in a state of mind of overdose, and we're having to come back in, use our resources at high speed to get to some of these, and give them Narcan just to bring them back. It takes a lot of resources, it puts a lot of our deputies at risk to get to those overdoses. If you, you heard what our numbers, you know, our numbers are strong, we're solid, we're safe with our responses, because we train that way. We train to be safe and route. But, I just want to bring that to those who are distributing this drug in our community. Alright, at this time, we've got Captain Gerard to our left. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, sir. My name's Michael Gerard. I'm captain of Support Services. I have three areas of responsibility. First one being Fleet and Logistics, where I spend most of my time. I am the fleet manager for the sheriff's office. We have over 80 units in our fleet, to include a command center trailer, a drone operation trailer, a side-by-side, a radar speed trailer, a drone, and two high-water rescue vehicles. Another part of Fleet and Logistics is the manager of our uniform and equipment inventory. We house this at our 6,000 square foot facility that's off-site from the sheriff's office, and I'm responsible to make sure that everybody at sheriff's office has what they need to do their job. Area two is court operations, which includes the bailers. We have five bailers that are in court every day of the week. With that, is two civil deputies that handle evictions and writs of execution of property, and they also handle magistrate's court, where evictions are started, and anything under $10,000 if somebody's being sued. This section also administers a pre-trial release electronic monitoring program, which right now, I think we have six people on, where we monitor them, so they don't have to be in our jail running up the bill. IT is the third area responsibility. We have two very intelligent IT folks, one of them's here tonight, that answer to me. I make sure that their scheduling, everything's handled appropriately, but as far as the IT work, I let them handle it. And my public service announcement would be, you know, cold weather's approaching, now's the time to check your antifreeze in your car, check your battery, and also keep an eye on your air pressure, because as the weather gets colder, your air pressure, your tires are gonna be lower. So, before you hit the road, make sure you take care of all those issues, and allow your car plenty of time to warm up and defrost the windshield before you drive down the road, so you ain't like, hey, just be sure with your head out the window. I appreciate y'all. I hope you have a Merry Christmas and Happy Thanksgiving.
I told you we were gonna be informal about this this evening. We appreciate, we appreciate the update. Speaking of the cold weather, we've already experienced a few 30-degree nights. Anyone familiar with Dr. Shelton? He has been a longtime medical doctor, physician here in the county. His ministry is to provide, he has provided us sleeping bags to, to our patrols, and if they see someone out in the cold, they have a sleeping bag that we can provide, so it's lifesaving. So... So, you know, for those types of outreach, those ministry outreach, if those, those watching, if you have an outreach that you want to participate or you want to put together that makes our community safer, it gets people moving on through our county, we'll, we'll talk to you and support that, okay? Look, y'all heard a lot of information tonight, you've heard transparency. We give you everything that Beaufort County Sheriff's Office has to offer you. I'm impressed with the staff, I'm impressed with what we do for you, the county, because you expect it out of us. You know, when you're in need, you have an expectation from us, and that's why I have no problem sitting here tonight, being transparent to you what we have to offer. Everything other than the equipment that you just heard, we have to use our professionalism, our training, our life experience to do those lifesaving, those things for you, and we're here for you. Again, to my left, we have the whole section over here, and we appreciate the emergency workers here that are attending tonight. I thank you for your service, what you do. If you have one of the Fire Chief Ted, would you have? Come up, please, if you'd like. If you'd just, eh, give us a PSA, some kind of public service announcement of what?
Well, we do, we appreciate y'all coming out tonight, appreciate everybody in the community that showed up tonight. The biggest thing, I guess, this time of the year was, we get a lot of calls dealing with heat systems, fireplaces, chimneys, that sort of thing. So if you, if you, any way possible, get your chimney professionally cleaned or come up with a way to, to clean and to be prepared for this heat season, whether you burn wood or whether it's gas, electric, whatever, get those things checked on, if you will, and it'll save, save you a lot of headache down the road and it'll help, you know, the community out of the way of course, from a response standpoint. That's really, that's my public service announcement, did you say it a little again?
Good, yeah.
That's the, that's the biggest thing we run into this time of the year with theaters and stuff like that, so just be careful. We, I may be jinxing us, but we, we say that we have one of the safest communities, we got one of the largest land areas in the county as far as our vision, but we run some of the, less amount of calls than any other department in the county. We're fortunate from a safety standpoint, I'm not saying it's anything that we do, but most of our citizens in our area, our service area are very conscientious about stuff, and we're thankful for that. Again, thank you for what y'all do, appreciate y'all being here with us tonight, and if you need us.
Well, thank you, thank you, Chief. And you're, you do have one of the most interactive, active communities in Beaufort County. This community is, one, is mostly family, and one family member's taking care of the others, what y'all do best, and I know that. At this time, we are here to answer any questions, concerns for Beaufort County that's watching us on Facebook Live. If you will send your questions in on the, on the pro, the interactive questions, and we have someone monitoring that. But we've said a lot, and I know we've answered a lot of your questions before you asked them, so. But, you know, that's what I enjoy about this Town Hall, is because we are transparent. There's not a lot of, you know, I've had media outlets that not attend, and I, I have no problem with them attending, wish they would attend just to be able to answer, you know, listen to some of these answers. Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
So my husband and I are new to the area, we've been here nine months, and like the chief was saying, we're over in two sixty-four East, right near, right next to Gatesville Cemetery, and like, we're ten miles from here, so when we call, God forbid I never have to call nine-one-one, but does it go to you in Washington and then you, you send out the closest?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so for us, I think the closest would be Antigua, which is four miles away.
Just don't give your, yeah, don't give your address, but just, we, we're good. Just don't give your address out, because we are recording live.
Oh, no, I know, I, I know, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to make that, but I'm saying that we, we're ten miles from here, so you folks would be the first responding to us.
If I may interject, so every county, and every geographical county, has a central nine-one-one communication center, and that's just the nucleus of that communication. And it's a very high-tech system, and what they do is they'll make that call out to, to the nearest fire station, based on tones and based on their technology, and, and it'll go to the proper. But if you could add to that.
Right, as soon as you call us, it's gonna drop as long as, and we haven't ever had issues in that area, but when you call us, we'll get a location of where you are. That location drops automatically onto our mapping system. As soon as we enter your address into our computer system, it's gonna drop a pin on our map, right where you are, and our overlays are gonna show us who your fire department is, who your law enforcement agency is, and who your EMS medical rescue unit would be. So automat, as soon as we get your address, we're already gonna know who you're gonna send. And then if someone, if an EMS unit is not close by, we already have, or if the closest unit is on a call, we already have in our system who we're gonna send next and, and what resources we're gonna get to you, just based off of your address.
One more question. I heard at another meeting that we were at recently that works are, well, send works to expand the jail there in Washington, is that true?
There is a, what, the need of it, the need of it is, yes, they need to consider expanding the jail. The decision will come from a, from the county commissioners, who fund that need. So, that is correct. There is talks, and there are subcommittees that are meeting monthly, and they've been, they've been deciding on expansion for a few, few meetings, maybe a few months. So, we're, we're anticipating, we're anticipating some solution to that too, so, thank you.
No, question, young lady. Do you send out notices ninety days before or after the silk period is, is expiring or anything like that, or do we have to remember to mark that on a five-year program?
Actually, we do send out a letter and a paper copy of the application to you ninety days prior to your expiration, but we also, with the new online option, you'll get a letter that lets you know you can, you can go to the online option, or you'll be able to still get a paper copy of the application. So we do send a letter out that lets you know that you're about to expire.
Good. Question here?
Now, you mentioned earlier, and I believe it was, you made it, mention that we do send, we do send inmates outside of the county, is that correct?
Yes.
Are we running the numbers on what that cost is versus the cost of keeping them in-house et cetera?
We have, no, I don't have them with me, but yes, there's a cost. So it depends on where they're going. You know, what, what Captain Sidersen was talking about was that we, when they go to prison, you know, that's part, once they're sent to prison, there's no cost to us, that's part of, that's their next destination. Yeah, so safekeeping is one location, then there's also situations where we might send an inmate to another county and they send us one of their inmates. There's different reasons to do that. Our facility, our biggest challenge is that we don't have a lot of ways to isolate inmates. So if our, our blocks are pretty much everybody's together, whether they like each other or not, and there's, whether it be a medical reason, a mental health reason, or, or a behavioral reason, there's needs to isolate inmates. So there will be times that we have to either swap with another facility with somebody, which we've done in the past, or send them to safekeeping. The main reason we're gonna send somebody to safekeeping is gonna be for medical issues. If they have a, a very high risk of heart attack, or if it's a pregnant female, we're gonna send them to safekeeping because they have the ability to provide the proper care, or we're limited with our resources, we don't have a big medical facility in our jail. So it's either while they can handle in that small room, or sending them to the hospital, which in itself is a high cost.
I think you kind of misunderstood where I was going with this. I, I would, I would like you guys to challenge on the cost of outsourcing all of the inmates to other facilities outside of the county, versus, you know, looking at building, you know, upgrading a jail, et cetera. I mean, have we run those numbers?
We'll look, we'll, let's step after this and we'll talk, because I, I believe I understand trading out, building a new structure versus outsourcing.
Correct.
What's best, you know, Beaufort, all counties are best served when they keep their own, in the counties that, that the crime was committed in, that they owe, they owe that to the county that, that they serve in. But I totally understand what you're saying, so. And the, those numbers have been looked at, but we'll look into it, but we'll look in, we'll talk to you. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Fortunately, in this part of the country, we have had no school shootings, but it could happen. What good is the unarmed resource officer at the school if this does happen?
Well, being fair to all, it would be a, if, if they carry the title of a security, then they have the training to at least call nine-one-one and get other law enforcement agencies that are armed en route.
What could happen to COVID?
But that's the best-case scenario I can give you. I'm not responsible for an unarmed security at the school at this time. We're working very hard to work with the school superintendent and the allied security, and I, I don't know of any circumstance at this moment if they are any unarmed at this time. But I, I have heard of situations where there, there are and, and have been. So I know it exists.
My grandson, if he's armed, he's got it dead very well.
Well, we're gonna, this office is gonna come to you the need of a active shooter, and that is our greatest priority, and every deputy in this office knows that, and every law enforcement officer. We, we understand what we're up against with the security measures in place with, and we're, we're all ready to respond.
Okay, I've asked this question a lot of times, and I want to be clear, I want it to be clear with you. If someone's breaking into my home, when can I legally start pulling the trigger?
Well, you know, using the word legally, and I, I would say at the, at the moment you feel that your life is in danger.
Well, if somebody's breaking in my door, I mean, I'm probably gonna start shooting free the door.
You know.
I've heard, you got the light door to get in, they got the threat, you, you got the secret arm.
What, what we measure about life and danger is from one individual to the, the next, and, you know, the castle doctrine is what you're being, what you're exercising that self-defense or that protection of your dwelling?
Well, I feel like if somebody's busting down my door, they're there to do me and my family harm.
You got an input on that, Captain Siders?
So you can't use deadly force to protect property, all right, but you can use deadly force to protect yourself, okay? So if you feel like you or a family member are in danger of being hurt or killed, then yes, you can use deadly force to protect yourself.
That's what I was just saying, if somebody's trying to break down your door.
So.
They're, they're intend to do some harm somehow.
Well, the, the thing is, is you have to be able to say in that time, at that moment, that right now you feel like you are in danger. And that's, that's a, that's a point in time that every individual is gonna be different, all right? You know, if somebody was beaten and slammed on my door, I may not feel in danger for myself at the same time that you would. So it's really just a matter of when it starts to feel like you are in danger of being hurt or killed, or a family member. Does that kind of clear it up for you?
Uh, that's the way I would look. If I had a two-level house and your children are upstairs, or grandchildren, and they're depending on your safety, then the threshold of how you feel is, is different than someone who maybe has, you are home alone, and you know you're not there protecting others, well, your threshold of how you feel is different than it would be if, if there were other people involved. Because it doesn't mean that threat that you hear at the door that's trying to get in that door may not be the only threat around that whole property or around that house or that, that situation. So not to change the scenario, but everyone has a different threshold of how they feel that their life's in danger. At the end of all that, the law's gonna, is gonna want you to say that your, your life, and you have to articulate, are you in harm's way when you take that?
I'm a widow.
You, you're the witness, right?
I am a widow and I, you know, live alone, I lost my husband, and I live by myself, and I usually keep my outside lights on until it's time for me to go to bed, and then once I start putting my lights off is when I go to bed, and, you know, if I would hear something, I would, you know, try to protect myself.
And I think that's great advice you just gave from yours, to, to everybody in here and, and others listening.
Everybody in here knows me.
Well, and, and those who are listening, always turn your lights on, utilize, utilize things that make you feel safe, whether it be lights in the house, out of the house. Checking things and verifying it before, before the dark hour, you know? Go ahead and take care of outside things before dark hour. Park your car, park your car where your headlights are facing dark areas and you can hit your remote, make the lights come on, and then, then you can see dark areas. So that's good advice. I think you did, I think that was good advice. But the castle doctrine is real, and it's there for you to defend and protect yourself. Any other questions? Anyone? Is there any online questions, sir? All right. Anyone on the staff have any last comments you'd like to make? From, we are excited that you came, we appreciate you coming. This is our last Town Hall on this tour for this year, for 2023. We'll start a new series of this in 2024, and that will come out on the Beaufort County Sheriff NC app. I hope that you, you'll download it, then push notification, we'll let you know of incidents that occur in your area or around the county for the, for the greater good of public safety. I want to say one last, the Ace of Hearts Initiative, again, is the awareness of cruelty against animals, children, and elderly. Where, where these cannot defend and protect themselves, we must protect it. And if you know of any cruelty to any of those three, say elderly, if you know that they're being robbed of their prescription drugs, or somebody's robbing their money from them, scandals, scandals are difficult, but please report them. There's more, there's probably more scandals than we can take reports, but we're here to serve this county and, and make the county feel safe. to serve this county and make the county feel safe. But again, cruelty to animals, where there's, where there's that kind of attitude, there's probably criminal activity around that property, and we want to know.
One last question. If we're driving down the highway and we see a deer that's been bitten recently just laying on the side of the road, is that you folks we called or somebody else?
No, that's, that's a trademark of Beaufort County. There is a service. If you do, if you call administrative number to our communications at nine four six oh one oh one, they, they will either call DOT, Department of Transportation, is, is who would dispatch that to. And then they'll get around the nine hundred fifty square miles that we offer and.
Well, I'm seeing more and more deer on the side of the road.
You're gonna see a whole lot more. You're in the, you're in the Bible Belt of deer hunting, bear hunting, and welcome to Beaufort County. All right, at this time, we thank you, and we were closed. Any questions you got, please stand by, we'll, we'll get up and talk. Thank you again, good night.